Good evening. This marks the beginning of the workshop on updates, legislative updates and things. Mayor, do you want to introduce our guest? Or Jason, I don't know who to turn this over to. Carol?
Roll call.
We've got multiple. I'm not sure who's going first.
Roll call. Roll call.
Roll call. I do that every time we have a workshop. I can jump right into it. Every time the -- city clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Anderson.
Here.
Councilmember Andrew.
Here.
Councilmember Fagin.
Here.
Councilmember Horland.
Here.
Councilmember Sordel.
Here.
Mayor Stoner.
Here.
City Attorney Ezreal.
Here.
Thank you.
I don't see Michael Gottlieb yet. Does he?
He may be stuck in traffic. He also had trial calendar, so he may have been delayed there. However, Dan Daley is with us.
Do you want to start with Dan?
So let's start with Dan.
Okay, Dan, come on. Come on. Don't even sit down. You're here. How are you doing, Dan? Welcome.
Good. Thank you. Council President, Council Chair, Council President. Council President, okay, cool. Good evening, everybody. Good to be with you. And I think I'm your first legislative update, right? All right. Cool. It's very exciting. Very exciting. But that also means, so I just heard the story about, you know, Representative Gottlieb coming and doing the last, being the last one, and just saying, hey, we had a session. You've had three of these. Great to see you. Bye. But I'm happy to tee it off. And first and foremost, I want to start by thanking you for your time and your efforts in Tallahassee. Many of you have traveled to Tallahassee, have spent time talking with me, talking with other folks about what's moving and hopefully not moving in many cases in Tallahassee. And so I certainly appreciate that as always. So I wanted to just kind of dive in. I'll go over a couple of things that we were able to work on this session. I will touch on a couple of bills that I'm sure many of you, if not all of you, are very well aware of and that impact cities. And then just kind of generally tie it all together. And then I have good news, assuming that the governor signs the budget at some point relatively soon, for you all. So I'll start with a couple of things we were able to get through. And Mayor, I'm sorry, I said council, but also Mayor, thank you, and always good to see you as well. And thank you for putting this together and for having me. So first and foremost, I wanted to talk about House Memorial 505. This related to Florida's National Guard. You may have heard me speak about it at another event or seen something about it on social media or one of our email updates. If you don't get my email updates, we do an update weekly during legislative sessions, so you can kind of keep up with what's going on. I also do these cheesy one-minute videos on social media that give you a quick download if you don't want to read my whole email. Happy to send those to you as well. But House Memorial 505 relates to the National Guard. And it's a really important memorial because the state of Florida, we are the third-largest state now, and we have the 53rd-largest National Guard out of all the states and territories that have a component. And why that's a problem is candidly, for the last 18 months, our National Guardsmen and women have put in more operational hours in the last 18 months than they have in the last 20 years. So these folks have been cycling through. And if you're familiar with the National Guard, right, they can get activated at the state level by the governor for hurricanes, for COVID, for civil unrest, for any issue at the state level. But they can also be federalized, and they can be activated under the President of the United States. As a matter of fact, we have National Guard troops in six of the, I think it's six of the seven combatant commands around the globe, right? So these men and women are working day in and day night, day in and day out, on state issues, on federal issues, keeping us safe at all levels. And they're getting burnt out. These, we have 12,000 National Guardsmen and Women. We have over 20, what, close to 23 million residents in the state of Florida. We have 12,000. And that number is capped and set by the National Guard Bureau in Washington, D.C., ultimately at the direction of Congress. Our congressional delegation is aware of this as well and has put pressure on the National Guard Bureau. There are certain members of that delegation who have been putting language into the National Defense Authorization Act to try and fix this issue. It's still an issue. And I'm continuing to work with my folks in Tallahassee to put pressure on our federal partners to make sure that this issue gets addressed, because ultimately, they fall under, the National Guard falls under our budget and the governor's command. So that being said, I'm proud to report that we did pass, in a bipartisan unanimous fashion, this House Memorial that will go up to Congress and say, hey, you need to act on this, because it's putting states like Florida and Texas and California, who also rank 53rd and 54th in troop count, at risk. And so proud to say that we made that through, again, in a bipartisan unanimous fashion. Second one that I'd like to talk about is House Bill 201. This related to Energy Star and WaterSense appliances. We were able to get this bill rolled into this year's tax package. So for, starting on July 1 for the entire year, July 1 of 2022 till July 1 of 2023, refrigerators and freezers that are $3,000 and under, and water heaters and clothes, washer, dryers under $1,500 will be tax exempt. So again, trying to incentivize folks to update their appliances, get them more energy-efficient, water-efficient, but also spurring the local economy as well. So proud to say that that was through and has been signed by the governor, I believe, with the tax package, which has been signed. So that's good as well. I want to talk about a couple of bills. One that I know you are very aware of is House Bill 325 that related to vacation rentals. Folks, I mention this every year, because it's not always what you can do in Tallahassee. Sometimes it's what you can stop. And I don't like to take a whole lot of credit, but I have helped lead the charge on killing this bill the last three years. So much so that the bill sponsor threatened to name it the Dan Daley Vacation Rental Bill, if it ever made it through. I'm proud to say it hasn't. We were able to kill it again this year in the Ways and Means Committee. And you know what? If I can just talk on this one just briefly. When I first started working on the vacation rental issue, it's not because it was important, really important, to the city of Coral Springs. We didn't have it as an issue. There weren't a ton of folks doing vacation rentals in Coral Springs, right? You're so far, kind of like you guys, we're so far from the ocean, it's not super attractive. Well, that's actually changed. Now, there's a ton of them popping up all over, and you're probably having the same situation here. And so cities that traditionally haven't been as engaged on the issue are now engaged because it's an issue. And the next wave of this, and I've been telling this to folks as I go around, the next wave of this, and you can probably see accounts, I think The Wall Street Journal did an article on it, where you have hedge funds buying up, like, city blocks and flipping them all to vacation rentals. And because your hands are tied, there's very little that you can do about it. And that's going to be the next wave, and that's an even bigger, for my account, even bigger issue than the bill as it exists today. So we're going to continue to fight that battle. That is one that we have had success, obviously killing the bill that would go further than state law. But I think we need to go a little bit backwards and give cities back the right to regulate vacation rentals in their communities. One other bill that I wanted to talk about was House Bill 1421 that related to school safety. Every year, I try to work with my colleagues in Tallahassee on a school safety bill. As many of you know, I'm a graduate of Stoneman Douglas. It's an issue that I take very seriously and near and dear to my heart. I think there should be a school safety bill every year, because there's always something to be done, and there's always a little bit more that we can do. Proud to say that that will now punish false reporting and updates the threat assessment process that schools go through in the state. So continuing to work on that year after year. Really quick, I wanted to talk about a couple of the bills that are dangerous for cities. First and foremost was Senate Bill 620. This was the business damages against local government. This is basically eminent domain for businesses. I think it's a terrible concept. I think it's a dangerous concept. And my hope is that the governor vetoes it, but I'm not super optimistic that that's going to be the case. If you're familiar, there was also a rival bill to this that basically would have created a whole new legal process where any ordinance that you all pass, save something for life and safety, can be challenged by any member of the public. That's anybody that can cobble together, you know, what do I figure, 400? Mike Gottlieb's probably the better guy to ask. I don't file much in court now. But 400, $450 can put a stop on your ordinance automatically. Automatically stays the implementation of your ordinance for a period of, you know, figure 12 months, 18 months. That's crippling to local governments, especially if you have somebody that just wants to come in and cause problems for your city. So luckily, that didn't go through this year, but my, it may come back. And that was Senate Bill 280. One small victory, but a positive victory, was House Bill 105 related to smoking, which as many of you probably know, gives you the authority, I don't think you have many beaches in plantation, but gives you the authority to regulate smoking in your city parks and county parks that are contained within your city as well. So look out for that. I don't think that's been signed into law by the governor, but hopefully it will be soon. As many of you know, we just came back from a special session where we had to redraw the congressional maps. I'm happy to go into more detail if you'd like on that. And we also got into a fight with Disney, if anybody hasn't been following that. Great, great use of taxpayer dollars when you're talking about $72,000 a day to keep us in special session. We have now, as of the other day, been notified that we'll be going back in special session in the end of May on the issue of property insurance. I want to say that we are going to do something comprehensive and that it's going to actually solve the problem, but in the special session, I do not actually think that is the case. I think you will see something minor so that the legislature can say that we've addressed the issue, and they're going to kick the can to November when the new Speaker and new Senate President comes in to actually do something substantive. The problem with that, as many of you know, is, I'm sure just like I am, you're hearing from your residents as well, right? What are we going to do on property insurance? My rates are skyrocketing. My insurer just left the state. I want to say we've had four or five, just in the last couple months, that have actually stopped doing business in Florida altogether. And citizens continues to balloon, right? So there's got to be a comprehensive answer. And I think the comprehensive answer means that the one side, and that's the trial bar, has to give a little, and the insurance industry on the other side has to give a little, because that's probably the right answer, and that's probably good policy. So we'll have to see what comes of that. But with that, I did want to mention that I am proud to report that the Plantation Breeze Swept Park Estates Water Main Replacement Phase D has been funded in the budget in the sum of $800,000. So kudos, and thank you for bringing that project and trusting me with it. My hope is that the governor will now sign the budget, since we are through the special session on the congressional maps. It was a bargaining chip for him. So my hope is you will have those dollars committed here in the next couple of weeks, fingers crossed. We're still working on it. As always, I have Sarah Perisoe and Stephanie Jean in my office. Stephanie is going to be transitioning out. Kim, I haven't figured out how to say her last name yet. Snitzius is awesome and wonderful, and you're going to see her at everything. If you can let us know about events you're having in the community, Kim will be there. I'll be there. We want to make sure that we're there to support you all. So keep in touch. As many of you know, if there's anything I can ever do for you, please let me know. I did want to give a shout out to the awesome Eric's team. Candace and LJ do a heck of a job for you in Tallahassee. They really do. And I've known them forever. I think Candace has known me since I was 17. So they do a great job for you. And also Omar, who represents you on the federal level, I've had the pleasure of knowing for years, and he does a good job for you in federal, in D.C. as well. So with that, many of you may know that the Florida Live Arena is also in my district, which means the Florida Panthers are in my district. We are going into playoffs, so go Cats. And with that, Council President, Madam Mayor, thank you very much for having me. Appreciate your time and your support.
Hold on. Councilmember Horland would like to ask you something. I'm not sure what.
Since I saw you twice in Tallahassee, there were no questions, but I wanted to thank you, because I don't know if anyone, if we realize this, we're going to be losing you. You're not going to represent Plantation anymore with the redistricting?
I will still, I actually still have a chunk of Plantation.
Still have a chunk?
I think it's actually growing.
I didn't think you did.
Yes. You're stuck with me.
Oh, good. No, I'm thrilled. Okay. Because you and Sarah and Stephanie, you know, I know I've said it to you privately and I said it here publicly, but especially during the early days of the pandemic with unemployment, you were really great in working with me and working with the residents. So thank you for everything you've done.
Thank you.
Mayor, go ahead.
I'm hoping you can give me some insight as to what didn't happen regarding the Surfside impetus, and while, and it seems to appear that nothing happened.
Well, Mayor, I think you bring up a really good point. And, you know, I talked about it in the beginning. I said sometimes it's not always what you can do, it's what you can stop. And sometimes there are things that we need to do that, for one reason or another, get stopped. And that's a shame for something like Surfside, right? So the bill that, and by the way, is the incoming Speaker in a couple of years, Representative Danny Perez, carried, I think was probably a step in the right direction. I don't know, because I didn't see it in one of my committees, so I didn't have a chance to vet it, and it never made it to the floor. But, you know, certainly that is one that has slipped through the cracks. And I think the problem with that, and the concern that I have, is sometimes our, a lot of the time, our legislature is very reactionary, right? We only, a tragedy happens, Hurricane Michael, the shooting in Parkland, Pulse, Surfside, right? And you can look at the response to that issue and the legislature made based on the time of that event, right? So Michael, for example, happened right before the legislature went into session, deeply impacted the Panhandle. You had a lot of the Budget Chair for that year, and others are all from the Panhandle. So we put in tons of money, and I'm not saying that was wrong. I think that was the right thing to do, right? But we addressed that issue, and we did some other updates to address that issue and the issues that Michael caused. Parkland is another example, right? The legislature was in session when the shooting happened, so there was actually a response, right? And then Marty Stoneman Douglas Public Safety Act. Give you another example, Pulse. The Pulse shooting happened outside of session, so you never saw any response whatsoever. Nothing was done. Surfside happened outside of session, and I thought, candidly, given the momentum and everything that we had been hearing out of the folks in South Florida, particularly the Miami-Dade delegation, we would have seen that. And that really kind of unraveled. And look, in part, in part, it may have been that we don't fully know or fully understand what caused it yet. My hope is that if that is the reason that the sponsor brings the bill back and makes some changes and brings it up and pushes it through, my concern is, going back to what I said before, the limelight's not really on that issue anymore, right? And so are we going to actually take action to make sure that we're, you know, preventing something like that from happening again? So long story, long story short, I think we still have to see what comes of it. But I think, you know, what I'm going to need from all of you and from all the cities in this state is to continue to keep that pressure on, to give you all the leeway that you need, and to update the inspection standards and all that kind of stuff to keep the pressure on them to do something.
Well, I don't disagree that that's not happening, but within our city, we have a complex that is in dire straits. And in my opinion, it's a civil matter. We really can't step in as much as I think we have enough inspections that we could really set forth some specifics. But there were many, many complexes built here in the '70s decade. We are now at 50 years and 40 years. And I'm concerned. I'm really concerned. People have made a practice of not having reserves. And I talk up here a lot about deferred maintenance and how it can, in fact, be deadly. And much to the chagrin of everybody else. And it's sort of like, we talk about our sewer infrastructure and so forth. If you don't see it, you don't know it exists.
That's right.
But I was hoping that this could be an example, the worst kind of example, that would be the impetus to have the state move forward in some more stringent inspection requirements. So that's my spiel.
No, and I appreciate that, Mayor. And look, and I agree with you. I think the biggest, one of the bigger problems that I have, and there was some talk back in the day, or back when it first happened, that, oh, you know, the state may need to step in and may need to provide funding to, you know, for the buildings that haven't kept the reserves and haven't, and I, look, I want to feel it out. I'm not saying one way or the other, but I really kind of take issue with that, because, look, I've lived in a tall condo building right down the street, and there was no issue doing an upcharge or whatever the, you know, additional fee to redo the lobby and redo the elevators and redo the front entrance. But, you know, for all I know, and I'm not an engineer, that's why I went to law school, right? For all I know, the building's crumbling on the inside, and that's a terrible thing to say, but if nobody's, to your point, if nobody's looking, how do we really know, right? So it's a good point.
Right. Thank you so much. I appreciate all you do, and thank you for Breeze Swept. We really appreciate it. So anything you need from us, we're here. If you need a meeting place, whatever you need.
Thanks, Mayor.
We'll do it.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, Representative Daley. Anybody else? Thank you.
Thanks, guys. Have a great night.
Carol, you want to bring up?
Yeah.
Eric's?
Um, yes. Next, we were going to bring up Candace and Lauren to talk a little bit about the state session. We asked them to limit their remarks to about 10 minutes. And then Omar Franco, our federal lobbyist, will speak to you. And that should leave you some 15 or 20 minutes for questions for everybody.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Good evening, everybody. Council, Mayor, thank you. It's good to be home. Unfortunately, we're not staying very long, so, but I wanted to introduce Lauren Jackson as well. Wanted to first thank, I think he just left, Representative Daley and his staff is fantastic, as is Representative Gottlieb and Senator Book. So Angel in Senator Book's office, who is planning to be here. He is en route. He is en route. He's spectacular. He's wonderful. He's been a great communicator. So not like, I mean, unlike, you know, all the staff is great, but we've really worked, because we have Lauren Book and we work with multiple other representatives, I just wanted to give them a personal shout out. In addition to that, I want to thank those who came up for Broward Days and thank those who came up along during session to advocate alongside of us. We work very closely with the League of Cities and many other of our partners, and wanted to say that, yes, Breeze Swept is in there. We've already met with the governor's office once on it. I will be following up on that. I truly don't believe that the governor will be addressing that budget until after these special sessions. We're hoping that this is the last one, but you never know. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Lauren to go over some of the bills that may be a little bit more in-depth, that Representative Daley touched on, and then some other things additionally. As Representative Daley did mention, we are having a changing of the guard. We're having a new Senate President and a new Speaker of the House. That's going to change things. We have a lot of people running for, all over the entire state, different elections and different seats, and a lot of movement up until qualifying will happen. So just know that your team, Lauren, myself, and others will be on the road most of the time, meeting these people, educating them on better issues, and I'll keep you guys abreast. And I also want to thank Carol and Jason, they've been wonderful, for the communication through session too. So, and we're around afterwards for any questions. So thank you.
Thank you. And Representative Daley did a pretty thorough job going over a lot of things, so I, there's a lot of things that I can actually skip, including the special session. But with the budget, they did pass a $112 billion budget. It's about 12 billion over, or actually over 12 billion over what the governor recommended. So while Candace mentioned, we have met with the governor's office, so we are hopeful that he will be not going to be vetoing our project, but we know that there are going to be projects he's going to be looking at and doing a thorough job of that. The budget also included $200,000 for Pine Island Park as part of the FERDAP list. It included almost $500 million for flooding and sea level rise, $362 million for affordable housing. And with affordable housing, there was actually $100 million that was put towards a new program called the Hometown Hero Housing Program, and that provides down payment assistance for critical public workers. But that's not necessarily defined in the budget, so that's going to be done through rulemaking through the Florida Housing Finance Corporation. And so we're going to be looking and paying attention to who's going to qualify and be eligible for that down payment assistance, but that's a new program, so that's $100 million. $50 million for Job Growth Grant Program. There's another round of bonuses for first responders and teachers, and a record funding for K-12 education, cultural and museum grants, and mental health initiatives. There are a lot more in there, of course, and happy to answer any questions with that too. Going into policy, I'm going to start with two bills that I'm going to call mixed bags. And I say they're mixed bags because they address a real issue that I think we all support addressing, but it does come with a little bit of a local burden. So the first one is cybersecurity. They passed a cybersecurity package that does require local governments to meet certain standards in your hardware and software by a certain time. It also mandates training, but that's provided through the state. And they did provide $60 million in funding for local government grants and also training. So it's $30 million for training and $30 million for local government grants. The other thing that it does is it bans ransomware payments and requires ransomware incident reporting. Now, that might raise your insurance a little bit in the short term, but we expect that to decrease and go lower in the long term as that safety becomes a reality. So that's a little bit, as again, a mixed bag. The second one is HJR-1, and this bill would provide an additional home sit exemption of $50,000 for critical public workers. That'll go on the ballot in 2022. And that includes classroom teachers, law enforcement officers, correctional officers, firefighters, EMTs, paramedics, child welfare services professionals, active-duty military, and members of the Florida National Guard. I'm not sure if it's about volunteer firefighters, but I will look into that and get some clarification. So again, another mixed bag. It addresses a real issue, which is housing affordability, especially for critical workers that we want to be able to afford to live in our communities. However, it does come on the back of local government budgets. It is a permanent exemption, and so right now, we're doing well in Agvolorum, but we don't know how it's going to be in the future and what those long-term effects will be. And also, it's hard to determine what the impacts are for your local area, because, just because the city of Plantation employs X a number of police officers, we don't know that they live in the city of Plantation. And we don't know that the city of Fort Lauderdale police officers don't live in the city of Plantation, or the city of Deerfield's police officers don't live in the city of Plantation. So it could be that communities that were historically more affordable than other ones could be bearing more of a brunt than the other communities. And that brings me to the bad news. I'm going to start with the bad news, with preemptions. So HB 921, which has to do with campaign financing, there was a last-minute amendment that was put, it was in the final days of session, it came up on the floor, an amendment that restricts local governments' ability to communicate about issues that are on the ballot before the voters. So currently, you're allowed to provide factual information as long as you don't advocate for or against. This restricts it even further to where you can't do any outreach. You can't use any public funds to do voter outreach. You can host a public forum. You can respond to an inquiry. You can post factual information on your website, and you can report on government actions, like that you put something on the ballot or something like that, but you cannot do voter outreach. So for example, Amendment 1, a couple of years ago, the Florida League of Cities, they hired an outside consultant. They came up with a communications plan. They probably won't be able to do that now with the passage of this bill. We do expect a court challenge for the bill, so we will keep the city posted on that. But just so you know, if you, when you are able to assess what the impacts of HJR-1 are on your local community, you will be more restricted in how you can educate the voters on those impacts. Then Representative Daley already covered SB 620. Happy to answer any questions about that. It did, it did start off a lot worse than it was. They did accept about 80% of what the Florida League of Cities and Florida Association of Counties requested. However, the concept of the bill is bad to begin with, but again, Representative Daley already covered that. HB 423, this is just to highlight, a couple of years ago, they passed a law that required local governments to spend excess building code fees, to spend excess building code fee, code fees on either training or on rebates and refunds of fees, and reduction of fees. This just puts a private cause of action if you're not doing that, which I'm sure you are, I'm sure you're following the law, and it's not a concern, but it puts a private cause of action. So anyone that has a building permit or is an association that represents building permit has a building permit or is an association that represents building permit holders could then sue if they feel like the city is not following that law. And then just to quickly read through the other preemptions that passed this year, HB 7, individual freedom, and that impacts diversity and inclusion training for employees, immigration enforcement, religious institutions, local tax referenda, and real property rights, which really doesn't actually impact the city. That's more to do with private property, but it is a preempt, or private parking lots, but it is a preemption. So now, moving on to the good news, HB 1475, which is PFAS, that passed. That would give a little bit of liability protection while they're determining what the standards would be for PFAS cleanup. If the EPA doesn't adopt certain standards by, if the EPA doesn't adopt standards by a certain date, then DEP is required to, and then the legislature must ratify those standards before any penalties go into effect. So we supported that bill, and we were happy to see that pass. Representative Daley already mentioned the smoking in public parks. There's also the tree trimming bill. There was a bill that the Florida League of Cities worked with the Arboris on to help make surgical tweaks to the bill that passed a couple of years ago. So we supported that bill, and we were happy to see that pass, and legal notices, which just gives a little minor additional flexibility to publishing legal notices. It's not too big of a change, but it is something that we supported. And then to go into what failed, sovereign immunity, vacation rentals, local ordinances, preemption of local wage mandates, financial disclosures, outdoor kitchen equipment preemption, towing vehicles, pet protection, United States produce iron and steel in public works projects, and prohibition of public funds for lobbying by local governments. We mention all of this because, as you guys know, the majority of our job is defense, and we spent a lot of time playing defense on a lot of these bills, particularly sovereign immunity and vacation rentals. And thank you to those of you who came up and helped with those as well. And also, thank you to Representative Daley. I know he's not here anymore, but he did a tremendous job in helping us with those. And then, good bills that passed, school safety, as Representative Daley mentioned. There was also a law enforcement recruitment and retention package that passed. It provides additional financial incentives and benefits for law enforcement officers that are located here. The tax package, I know he mentioned the Energy Star Holiday. There's a lot of other holidays that are in there, like a ton of holidays, a whole huge list of holidays. But one of those, I want to give a shout out, though, to Senator Book, because she worked on that for maybe six years, has to do with the, it's Children's Clothing Shoes and Diapers Holiday, and that is for babies and toddlers' clothes and diapers. So that's a full year of a tax exemption for those things, and we think that that could benefit a lot of families. So we want to thank Senator Book for her leadership on that. There was also a couple of bills that our Broward delegation helped to sponsor and carry, which was a comprehensive review study of the Central and Southern Florida Project. That's going to hopefully help keep our community safe from flooding impacts as the water table continues to ride in the Everglades. It's going to make sure that we're up to date on the structural safety of our structures out in the Everglades so that a horrible disaster could, you know, can be prevented. There was also a statewide flooding and resilience bill that passed as well. And, you know, I'm just going to leave it at that. If you guys have any additional questions, I'm happy to go in and answer them.
And just to add, you know, we, for those in the audience as well, you know, we send our weekly updates when we're up there in Tallahassee and during the committee weeks. But we would love always, as always, you know, communication back, feedback. Always very helpful. And I'm assuming Angel probably just walked in.
She is.
Well, you missed your shout out earlier, but I'll give it again. Angel has been fantastic, and Senator Book, too. Just wanted to make sure that you guys know that they were extremely helpful, especially during the budget conference. So, thank you, Angel.
Gonzalez.
Yeah, yeah. So, and we'll be also, I mentioned Florida League of Cities, their coalition. I know that many of you, you know, this year is going to be down here in South Florida, so we're very excited about that conference. And we'll keep you posted on other conferences as well. Does anybody have any questions for us?
Councilor, go ahead.
Thank you. And thank you both again. You know, you've built up such great relationships up there, and it was really helpful to be able to go up there and talk about some of these bills and really explain to people why they should care about Plantation. So given your relationships up there, and we know that there's going to be a change of leadership, any feel whether the new leadership will be more friendly, less friendly to municipalities? About the same?
Well, I mean, you know, the incoming speaker, Paul Renner, is a dear friend. He's a very good man. He's spent probably, I think, nine or 10 years living in Broward County. So it gives a little bit of a different feel. He's well aware of our community. So I would like to think that he would be more sympathetic or even empathetic, but we haven't had those conversations yet. But he has always been somebody who has an open door, always listens. Coalition building has been fantastic. And Pasadomo, actually, and I can let Lauren talk about that, that she's been really great with, especially during the vacation rental situation.
She was actually willing to work with the League of Cities.
Correct, right. And she's very open.
One thing that we've talked about often is there really are not enough legislators up there that had local government experience, and that's where we went into with the preemption bills. My concern this year, and I know I had spoken to Dan Daley about it, and we've talked about it here, with that extra ad valo, with the ad valorem tax, nobody wants to take that away from first responders, teachers. It's a very broad group. But one of the things, and I didn't see what the final bill looked like, but we were trying to get an income limit on there because, you know, you could have spouses, and maybe one is an entry-level teacher, but perhaps the spouses make $150,000 a year. So was there any talk about, you know, even if this, while this gets signed in, maybe a clawback, kind of like what happened with the tree ordinance, once we see the impact on the local municipalities? Because we're really concerned about that. We don't know what the impact's going to be and if there could be an income limit when people are applying for that. That's for you.
Well, unfortunately, it's a constitutional amendment on the ballot. So that's, it's extremely difficult to clawback if it is passed. There wasn't a lot of nuanced discussion on it. It was one of those things where you had all these critical workers that everyone wants to support and, you know, help with their housing affordability. We're coming up and testifying in support of it, and it was very kind of difficult to get that nuanced conversation in, if that makes sense. So.
And I guess when I say clawback, is there any way to get that language changed before it goes on the ballot? Or is it?
I believe it's, we can, we will clarify, though. We'll reach out to the League of Cities and see, but I'm pretty sure what was passed by the legislature has to be what goes on the ballot.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
I think, was that the one with the homestead exemption for teachers?
It's teachers, social workers, military. I mean, it's very broad.
Was permanent. It was a permanent exemption. What if they're only a teacher of the year they apply for, or any of the others?
I believe that that would have to be taken into account in some way. Again, we can get clarification on that as well.
But then it goes to the concern, what you said, that would it also be that since you cannot educate, spend money, taxpayer dollars, educating the public, that an education campaign could not go out about that before it goes on the ballot?
Exactly.
And that's the concern. Because again, you know, we do, we would have some, you know, law enforcement that have been with the city for a long time that are making a decent salary, perhaps wouldn't need that help as a first-year officer. And that was one of the things the League had really tried to impart. So I don't know how we can educate the public on that, but somehow that word's got to get out.
Councilor Andrea?
That's a perfect segue to my question because I want a little more clarification, if you can, regarding outreach. So I know you said we could not use city funds to do outreach, but if we personally wanted to do something outside of city funds, or if funds weren't needed to do that outreach, would that still be allowable?
I don't believe so. I believe that you would have to be responding to an inquiry, was my understanding of it. And again, we can also get clarification on that, but it did enumerate what you were allowed to do. And that was, again, it, what it was enumerated in the language, at first, the language was incredibly broad when the amendment first dropped. The League of Cities left into action, and so did our delegation members. They definitely had our back on that issue. And Senator Rodriguez tweaked it to where he allowed for exemptions to clarify more. And by the way, they said that the impetus of that language had to do with Alachua County. Apparently, there was a really contentious local bill for Alachua County, and a commissioner came up to testify, and they said something about how they were going to do this outreach campaign to stop this local bill from going into effect, or the referendum that the local bill had. And then that caught the ire of the legislatures, and that's why they said that they pursued this language. So not necessarily HJR-1, although that was, that just conveniently got looped into that. But what it says that you're allowed to do is report on official actions in an accurate, fair, and impartial manner, post factual information on a government website or imprinted materials, host and provide information at a public forum, provide factual information in response to an inquiry, and provide information as authorized or required by law. So.
So the public forum, I saw your face, yeah. So that would actually be your best route to do that.
Because we do have, depending on our vote tonight, on an item on the agenda, we may have a charter amendment going forward. So it would be okay to do a public forum and explain just factually about the charter amendment.
And HOAs could invite you to come speak.
Okay.
But you, my understanding is that you can't reach out to them to say, can I come speak? And that's just what I took away from the questions and answers on the floor of what you could or could not do.
And our personal social media postings and all of those things.
So I think because you're, you can post on a website. Does it say government website? Oh, government website.
Yeah, we'll check on that because I, I would be surprised because your title doesn't follow you. So I would be very surprised, but I will definitely check on that, and I'll make sure that everybody knows.
Thank you. And thank you both, for all of you, for the job you're doing. We know how difficult it is, how challenging it is, and you're on the road nonstop. So we really appreciate it. Thank you. And the communication is excellent.
Thank you.
Councilor Sorel?
So we couldn't outwardly speak out in favor of, say, the new charter, but could our spouses?
I'm not an attorney.
Carrie has his hand up.
So before this bill, we could always spend money to educate. We could not advocate, right? Before this bill, individually, you could advocate and you could spend money. My opinion is that this bill does not change what you could do personally, as long as you are not acting on behalf of the city.
Which means our personal Facebook pages would be in play.
I'm sorry?
Which means we could use our personal Facebook pages if we wanted.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Okay, there you go. Great. It's a good team.
Anybody else?
Robin's glad to hear that.
Anybody else have anything for, thank you very much, very much for your hard work. Thank you.
No, we appreciate it, and we'll keep you posted on the special session as well. Thank you for having us.
Omar.
Hello. I'm going to keep it really brief because I, you know, I'd rather take questions. But we did submit community project funding for Bree Swep that got put in there. As you know, they did change how, the limit, so each congressperson can put in 15. It was 10 last year. I have been working very closely with Debbie Wasserman Schultz's staff. She said, listen, if you don't make the 15, do not worry. There's, there's a lot of other funding streams coming in through the IIJA and other places. So she's trying to kind of, her staff is fantastic. They're really doing a nice job. They're trying to say, if we have other pots for you, we're going to go aggressively for those pots. So the only thing that's really going to be earmarked are things that don't have pots that they can go after. So it'll be more like NOAA or things of that nature, things that, but either way, she, we have it in. And I know Carol and her staff, and we've been following all the listening sessions at DOT. I will tell you right now, it's a lot of, hey, the money's coming, and we still have to work out the kinks and get the exact guidelines as to how we're going to get it all out. So the Department of Transportation, they're the fastest, and they've done the most listening sessions, but the grants still have not come out. And I know we're looking for very specific grants that we have our eye on. They said in May, so hopefully in the next month or so. And then we'll aggressively, by the way, I've spoken with specifically Senator Rubio's staff. They will do letters of support for any grants that the cities are applying for. So that's something new that they haven't had. So it's a formal process, and I'll get it done, you know, once we know exactly which grants and for how much, we will get that going. So I just wanted to report on that specifically to the city. The appropriations process is underway. The four corners, as they call them, the chairs of the House and Senate approps, they're going to come out with the numbers, with the top-line numbers. Once those are going, the Appropriations Committee will get going. It looks like Shelby and Leahy, especially on the Senate side, do want to get it done. So we are going to see a very, it's going to move quickly. So I'm very happy that, you know, that it's not going to be like this year was terrible, you know, that they waited all the way till March to get a bill done. So, and I know you get a lot of my reports, so, you know, happy to keep you all on the loop. So I kind of just wanted to hone in on those things. But, you know, again, I could happily talk about, you know, a lot of the macro issues, maybe interested in like Build Back Better. That doesn't seem to have a whole lot of legs right now. You know, the tax components of it have really just stymied it. I don't need to tell you all. It's an election year. So there's a lot going on, you know. So I just don't see, Ukraine, you know, has unfortunately taken up a lot of time and a lot of effort. So, and quite frankly, they're just, they don't have a lot of floor time right now. They're really just, you know, it's, they're, they were off these last two weeks. They're going to be in for a little bit now, and then they're going to be off again. So floor time is just getting very, very condensed right now before the election. So all eyes on 2022, obviously. So WADA, the Water Resources Development Act, I think is one. And if they do allow for projects, I will be back to you all. Your staff's great, as always, getting me the information, getting the timely letters. Thank you for signing the letter on that. So, you know, I think we've become a little well-oiled machine in a short time. We got, you know, we're hitting all the strides. Now it's really, you know, the federal government that has to kind of pony up. And Department of Energy, they've, they're doing very poorly. They got to hire 3,000 people to implement the IIJA, but then, you know, we're kind of scared, like, okay, wait, so you're going to hire 3,000 new people and then create a program and then roll it out? So those are some of the things that, you know, those are some of the things that we're watching closely. We're talking to all the departments, especially DOT. One of the things I do want to mention, the Capitol is reopening. So, you know, I am a huge fan of getting in, you know, legislators, you know, getting in to see them, getting, talking with staff, letting them know, because no one can say the narrative, you know, the needs of the city better than you are. You know, you are our greatest advocate. We are literally just the facilitators. And so as it opens up, I will be letting, you know, maybe we'll do something with FAST, with the Florida League of Cities, I think. You know, I work very closely with Allison and Scott Dudley as well. So get you all up there, I think, would be a fantastic opportunity. We can do the formal ones, and then we can kind of do some side ones as well. But yeah, it does look like, knock on wood, May, it looks, you know, if the, if there's no, another big outbreak, we'll be able to get in those buildings. So I'll stop there unless you have anything specific. I know, you know, obviously, it's the federal government. There's a lot going on, but little passing. So, you know, so.
No, I just wanted to thank you. Not a lot of questions because your communication's been excellent. So thank you, Omar.
Right.
Go ahead, Councilor Andrea.
I do have one question. It's, it might be for Ms. Otteniano. That's why I was looking it out. But, or maybe Mr. Nuna Maker-Refin. But we did receive an email that we have an ALBA report that's due. That, that, yes, that has been submitted already?
Jason Nunnemaker, CAO. Yeah, Anna's on top of that. So we've done our first reporting, and we're keeping up to date on that.
And have we used the, weren't we obtaining it outside?
We have. We use them on the front end, and we've greatly curtailed that use based on feedback from council. You'll recall that authorization was pretty high, and we've controlled that. So be happy to give you all an update on that status at the next meeting.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
It went quick, and I couldn't Google. DOE has to hire 3,000 people. What do they do? And for, what is IJAA? Because I Google it, and I can't get it.
IJAA, they call it a bipartisan infrastructure law. IJ, I think is the infrastructure.
IJ.
IIJAA.
Okay. So it's an infrastructure law, and so.
It's the bipartisan infrastructure law.
So DOE?
E, Department of Energy.
Is trying to, is short, 3,000 people just to get the money out and make this?
Correct.
Get it clicking and clacking.
That's right.
Why is that? Just because it's a new thing?
They created so many new grants that the existing department personnel, they do not have the ability, as all these, you know, you put out the RFPs, but then you got to analyze it and make sure that they're giving it to the best projects out there.
And what are those grants for?
It'll be for anything, clean energy. Just a lot of clean energy. EVs will be stuck in there. So I think anything that has to do grid.
So if we wanted to study EVs or buy police EVs or something, if we wanted to shot at some money, maybe. And I'm really good at giving you work to go get money. I know. I acknowledge it's on me.
Just to clarify, we've taken the interest of council seriously, and procurement has been looking to see what we can do on EVs. We have not been able to source them at all.
Sure.
So right now, there is zero availability.
And that's just one example.
But certainly, we'll try moving forward. But I just wanted to make sure you all are aware, when those come forward to you, we'll detail our efforts to do that.
But within the context of this, this is only a piece of it. I'm not. And it's for EV charging stations, I'm imagining, is the, okay, I'll, I have some information on that, but I can get. I was just trying to roll. I got caught up in the alphabet. It's going to happen.
It is. And it will roll out. It's there just getting their ducks in a row. So hopefully, you know, we'll start seeing those coming out pretty soon.
Appreciate that.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Omar. Is there anybody else, Carol?
That's it.
That's it?
That's it.
All right. Well, then, that's it. All right, and then this. This is only a workshop. The city council starts in, well, so this concludes the workshop, and at 6 o'clock is CRA and 6:10 is city council. Got it? So workshop adjourned.